Mrs. Schaefer's kindness, dedication, and commitment to excellence in her classroom has been noted throughout the years, and she will be sorely missed by all. We wish Mrs. Schaefer well in retirement and this new chapter in her life. And Mrs. Stevens, we'd like to congratulate Mrs. Dawn Stevens on her impressive, dynamic, and impactful years of service to the South Hunterdale Middle and High School. Words cannot express our gratitude for her dedication, creativity, and enthusiasm that she has brought on a daily basis throughout her 30-year teaching career. Mrs. Stevens has served as an inspiration to all who know her from staff, students, and community members alike. We wish Mrs. Stevens well in retirement and this new chapter in her life.
Good evening, everyone. On behalf of West Amwell School, it's my honor to present Trudy Goddard and congratulate her on her retirement, not only a dedicated educator, but also a dedicated parent. I'm sure she's cheering on South Hunterdale as her son plays baseball tonight. Anyway, so Trudy entered the field of education as a student-teacher at West Amwell School. That experience led to a 30-year career where she has impacted so many Wildcats. Over the years, Mrs. Goddard has been an asset to our school community, and we thank her for all her efforts in and out of the classroom. Congratulations on your retirement and all the best as you begin to write your next chapter.
I'll only say, so Trudy is actually driving back from South Amboy, where she was cheering for Jack's final South Hunterdale baseball game. So that's why she's not here tonight.
And again, just congratulations to all. It's an amazing class of retirees. We wish you the best of luck in your future, and don't be strangers. I just enjoy your retirement. And then if we want to do, I think we're going to do some pictures in the hallway. So if we could have our retirees go out into the hallway, we'll take like a one-minute break, get a few pictures, and then we'll move on with our agenda.
Oh, we were not, we were, we were lucky we didn't hit too much traffic. So that was good, but.
Exactly. Must have been because, yeah. I certainly would not want to make that drive on a regular basis. Yes, they did. They lost, so, so they lost two to nothing. It was a nothing, nothing game until the bottom of the sixth and. Yes, maybe to start with. Oh, Gina, when Gina comes back, we'll resume our meeting. All right, we're going to resume our meeting. We do have next up this report of the student representative of the board, but our student representative, Ryan Rampell, is at a track meet today, so he will not be making a report. So with that, I will ask for a update from the PTO, PTA, but let's start with the LAEFA.
Hi, everyone. Janelle Whipple, President from LAEFA. Just a couple of quick updates for today. I don't think there's any grants that you are approving, but we did internally through one that you'll probably see next month. It was one of the most well-written grants we've received. Thanks, Mr. Suzo, for putting in the extra effort. Very nice. It's a really nice grant. When you see it, you'll all love it. It's called the Challenge Day. I don't want to steal any thunder, but I think it will be a very well-received program for the eighth and ninth graders next year. Really just talks about self-respect, respecting others, and kind of collaboration as students and friends. So we were very, very pleased with that one, and we're very happy to support that. We've got the submissions in for our senior awards and our summer awards. I am a bit disappointed. We only got a small handful of applicants, but we're very excited to be able to, you know, support those that did apply, and we will present those for the seniors on award day. So that is it for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
PTO. Good evening. Michael Strauss from the West Amwell PTO. So we've had a busy last month, and luckily we'll not have so busy a June. But our teacher appreciation week just wrapped up. We were really excited because it was more of a district-wide initiative this year than it ever has been, and we were excited to really honor the teachers and thank them for what they do every single day. Field Day is also coming up. That is going to be June 2nd. The PTO does support that in a big way with both volunteering. We feed all of the kids. We also get them all rainbow-colored T-shirts, so. Then also we'll have inflatables that are all sponsored. Our Omega 50/50 really went off insanely well this year. So we are excited that that was, that was a good thing for us and our sponsorship of Field Day. Our elections did finalize this past week, and Marcelo Rosso will be returning as corresponding secretary, and Jessica Hartigan will be returning as president. We also wrapped up our sixth-grade trip earlier this month. I am lucky enough to have been with them this year, and we're very excited. That's something that the PTO does support and administrates throughout the year. And as we were just doing in the corner, we have rising fifth, both of us have rising fifth graders, and we'll be starting for next year with a Trenton Thunder fundraiser that also will be tuned second. So nice, busy day, that day. And like Janelle, we also have awarded our scholarship for this year, so that will be presented on Senior Awards Night. And one final thing, I talked to the board today, and in the spirit of tonight's agenda, the PTO will be collaborating also with the Special Education Parent Group that is being formed, and I will be liaison, liaison with them to make sure that there is inclusion within any of our events that are happening over the next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Hi, everyone. Stephanie Volmer from LPS. And I wanted to say that we had, I think since our last meeting, I just wanted to mention that we had another sort of successful local book fair in collaboration with Frenchtown Bookshop. It's, it was really great to see the amazing collection of beautiful books that they were able to bring. It's just nice to have a slight change of pace from Scholastic. So I think this balance of having Scholastic in the fall and, and working with the local bookstore in the spring is working out really well. I, we had a lot of positive feedback from teachers and from families on that. The PTA Board put together a great Teacher Appreciation Week. There was a breakfast delivered one day, and I know we set up a great end-of-week luncheon for them out in the LPS courtyard, and it was so nice as we decorated some picnic tables and laid out the food, and it was just, we had sort of a bit of a pang thinking of it. It's like one of the last chances to use that courtyard as it currently exists in that space. You know, looking forward always, but also appreciating what, what we have there now. And I, I know that that too was, was really appreciated, and we, we were so glad to be able to do that for our amazing teachers and staff. The Walkathon has happened, and I just want to do a shout-out and thank you, huge thank you to everyone who came out to support the LPS Walkathon, which is the PTA's biggest fundraiser of the year. I don't have the exact totals, but I know the goal was $6,000, and I believe we are very close to reaching that goal. Nicole wasn't able to get me the, the final figure before I got here tonight, but just huge thank you to everyone who came out to support. That's what sets us up to do things like buy Field Day T-shirts and support the Teacher Appreciation Week and get books for teachers' classrooms at the book fair and things like that. So thank you so much. Let's see, the Walk itself is happening this Thursday, which is also Field Day, so it's going to be a very exciting, active day at LPS. And the PTA was also able to get the T-shirts, and I'm sure it's going to be a very exciting day down there at Ely Field. Let's see. And also, yeah, so apparently Next Level Ninja is going to be part of Field Day, so that will make it extra fun. Okay. End of Year Party is Wednesday, June 7th at Ely Park from 4:00 to 7:00. Everyone in the community is invited. West Amwell and LPS, come on down. There should be a cookout from the fire department, and hopefully they'll bring up the fire truck again, and didn't have that water action going on, so it should be really great. And DJ, excellent. So, yeah, so that's June 7th, last day of school, 4:00 to 7:00. And with Michael, I just want to also hopefully reach those fifth-grade parents out in the viewing audience to say you'll be hearing from us about starting fundraising for next year's sixth-grade class. The Trenton Thunder baseball game on June 2nd is the first event, but we're looking forward to working together closely with West Amwell next year to try to see if we can coordinate our fundraising and make it a fun and efficient process and a really great last sixth-grade class trip for our LPS sixth graders are all in West Amwell, for everyone who's sort of ending, you know, that elementary school period and before moving on. So, all right, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, correspondence, we don't have any of it. So then we will move to minutes. So I'll need a motion to approve the minutes of the April 24th meeting and also the executive session minutes. Thank you, Tracy. Thank you, Diana, for the second. Oh, Megan, sorry, my head's foggy. The lights went down. I couldn't see. Any discussion on the, on the minutes? All in favor? Anyone opposed? Sorry. Okay, up next, we have, so for the last four years, we have embarked every year on a review of one of our school districts' program areas. We have looked at guidance. We have looked at, you know, different areas. Our English is the second language program. This year it was our Child Study Team and our Special Education Program. And so tonight, we're going to present the results of that report. And in fact, you want to introduce? So hello, everyone. As Mr. Gallagher mentioned, we took a look at the Special Education Program this year. So we've been working with Public Consulting Group, or as we call them, PCG, for the last eight months, and then they put together findings, which we're going to go through tonight in a slide deck. And then there's a pretty substantial report that goes along with this. It's about 101 pages long. So tomorrow morning, I'll be sending out this presentation as well as the full report, and then we will post the full report on our website for anyone who would like to view it and take a look at that. So presenting tonight, we're actually going to have three folks that will be involved in the presentation. I'll be doing some slides. Dr. Naismith, who's our Director of People's Services, will be doing a few of the slides, and then our main presenter, PCG, Matt Farabkin, who will be coming up and presenting the findings from the last eight months.
Members of the board, thank you very much for this opportunity. My name is Matt Farabkin. I'm from Public Consulting Group. I'm based out of our Princeton, New Jersey, office. I've been doing program reviews of this nature for over six years. Prior to that, I worked for two state education agencies in special education before that I started my career as a special educator. So this is work that's very near and dear to my heart. Members of my team who could not be here tonight but played an important role, Moria Yulik, Jennifer Mellor, and Matthew Scott. Public Consulting Group, as I shared, does this among many other things. I'm part of our education practice area, and special education is a core component of our education practice area. And as your superintendent shared, there'll be some cadence tonight with regards to the slides that we'll be moving forward with. Next slide. So in special education, there's some alphabet soup. Just a couple of these that I'd like to go through, just so we're all on the same page. We don't need to go through the whole list, but some key ones. And I'll do my very best to refrain from using the acronyms and saying the whole term when I give the slide, but IEP stands for Individualized Education Program. A child who's been classified as having a disability under the Individuals with Disabilities Act has an IEP. INRS, Intervention and Referral Service. This is for children who are struggling learners, who in New Jersey, every district has INRS. MTSS, Multi-Tierred System of Support, Interventions for Students. CST, Child Study Team. ELL, English Language Learner. LRE, Least Restrictive Environment. ODP, Out-of-District Placement. PLAF, P-L-A-F-P, Present Levels of Academic and Functional Performance. That's in an IEP. And CPAG, Special Education Parent Advisory Group. So the methodology and approach. We, we start every one of these projects with research questions. It's really key that the research questions come up front because they ultimately serve as the North Star for this report. They serve as what we do when we are asking questions, when we're out in the field, in your district, in your classrooms, meeting with members of the community, with teachers. This is really the bread and butter of how we get started. So what we did is we looked through a set of questions. We looked at appropriate identification, referrals for evaluation, determination of eligibility in a timely manner. That's the number one. Number two, the extent referrals and determinations represent district demographics. Three, students who are receiving English as a second language support and their identification. Four, benefit of the programs and the continuum of services. Five, we looked at IEPs and how they address the individualized needs of students. Six, we looked at the extent to which varying education models, what they look like and how they work in the district. Seven, we looked at processes used by special education-related services. Eight, we looked at IEP team members and how they maintain student information. Nine, we looked at the allocation of resources. Ten, we looked at communication with stakeholders. And eleven, we talked with parents and now with parents, and the question's focused really on the extent of parents of students with disabilities are engaged in terms of the process. This is an important slide. It really shows the magnitude to which we went through this as an engagement. There, there are times when, you know, when the state comes or when another agency comes in, they do an audit. They look through the books. They want to check things off. We do things through community and stakeholder engagement. We conducted focus groups and interviews across the district. We held 15 focus groups and interviews with over 50 participants. We had two virtual student file review focus groups where we gathered and organized members of IEP teams across the district. We had stakeholder surveys, which was important. Forty-three parents completed it. Staff survey, 108. That's of all staff surveyed, and that parent survey is all parents of children with IEPs. We did classroom visits. We visited all three schools. We did three to five classroom visits at each school, leveraging a representative sample of places where children with IEPs are learning in your district. And we did a data and document analysis, which we asked the district for documents and data, which we subsequently used and incorporated in the report. So now what I'm going to do is run through the findings. The way this is going to work, the findings are going to occur. Then I'll be sharing recommendations, and then a member of the district team will step in and talk about implementation. But I'm going to start with what we identified, both strengths and areas of improvement. So intervention support, referral, and identification practices. Strengths, you have an intervention and referral service team at every building that's doing their work as mandated by the state of New Jersey. And there is an investment in the interventions. Folks are making considerable investments of time and energy to conduct these, to support students that are struggling, who may not in fact be classified, but are struggling in some way, shape, or form academically, and may need additional supports. Opportunities for improvement, consistency in practice. I think you definitely will be able to work smarter, not harder. If you're more consistent in your practices, that will subsequently benefit students. And that's as it relates to intervention referral services and multi-tiered systems of support. MTSS is a triangle. Concept of MTSS. Tier one, high-quality instruction for all kids. Tier two, certain level of kids that are struggling and get a middle level of interventions and supports. And you've got a small number up the top of the triangle. That's tier three, the most significant interventions. Just because you're in three doesn't mean you're going to classify as having an IEP. It's a system that works and is designed for all kiddos, but it's an important one for special education, which is why we talked about it in this report. Tracking this, we need to track the data. Tracking is very important, and making sure that there's consistency around tracking is critical. English Language Learner referrals, and I know that the district engaged in a 21/22 survey around this through our focus groups and interviews. A perception exists in the district that ELL students are disproportionately referred. There was reference in the report to an increase in referrals, and we felt it was worth including for further study. Next slide. The continuum of services and IEP development. Continuum of services in special education. The idea is, when you're a child with a disability, you're getting an individualized education, but there is a continuum of services from the most restrictive setting that meets that child's needs, but it may be really restrictive, all the way to the least restrictive. The idea, though, is that we are providing children an education in the least restricted environment. So restrictiveness is all relative, and this continuum is what that means, the continuum of services. Strengths, fostering inclusion. This is certainly a part of this district's mindset, which is most definitely worthy of praise. Early childhood expansion, the district took part and really made effort in making sure that it participated and engaged in that process. Opportunities for improvement, further improving that continuum of services and making sure that LRE is met throughout the district, especially access to more specialized services and settings. Evaluation practices, progress monitoring, and reevaluation assessments were analyzed and, and not necessarily aligned with best practice. And that's particular for reevaluation, among other things cited in the report. And we included that in that section. Excellent. The next slide, Special Education Leadership Procedures and Compliance. This district certainly has a commitment to special education programming. That was something that was shared throughout, families sharing their experiences with teachers and administrators, teachers talking about administrators and the supports they receive. Another one is complaints. So over the last two years, there have been no Office of Civil Rights complaints. That's U.S. Department of Education. There have been no New Jersey Department of Education Special Ed complaints or due process complaints. That's commendable, considering in New Jersey, the state happens to have one of the highest rates in the United States. So whatever you're doing in terms of resolving disputes, because inevitably there are differences of opinion. You're clearly working on the district and school level, which is worthy of praise. Opportunities for improvement, leadership change. You know, there's been leadership change in the Special Education Office at the director level, and I think that there were some challenges in terms of absence and making sure that there's consistency and vision is very important, which is why we included that. And written procedures, and what we mean here are standard operating procedures. The district has no formal written special education standard operating procedures to guide practice and compliance. Family and stakeholder engagement. This one's near and dear to my heart as a parent, also as an educator. The strengths here, the family, school, community. This is a small, close-knit district. Folks know each other. Teachers know each other. Teachers had the kids that are now the parents of kids, and that's delightful. That was something that came across, and, and that, I think, also enhances the relationships that exist here in this district. There are parental engagement efforts, and the district's made efforts to engage parents of students with disabilities. And certainly, your staff is extraordinarily dedicated as it relates to fostering longstanding relationships with students and families. You know, just anecdotally, I can say, when, when, when we walk into a room and a teacher wants to tell us about their students very quickly, but also says, "I had their brother and sister. I had their mother." You know, like with pride. That's, that's something that I think is really worth noting. Opportunities for improvement. This is an important one. Special Education Parent Advisory Group. Increased awareness and participation in the Special Education Parent Advisory Group is necessary. It's required in New Jersey. It'll also be an enormous benefit in terms of continuing the good conversations. Parent trainings. There's no structure for parent training to ensure parents are informed of their rights and how to best advocate for their students. When I say training, I mean formal trainings, because of course, trainings are happening. Parents start talking to their teachers. Informal kinds of things are happening. Parents start talking to their teachers, informal kinds of things are happening. I'm talking about it in a more formal manner. And there are some, uh, relationship challenges and I think this exists in many districts, especially for special education program. Um, that are often, uh, connected to the past. Um, nevertheless, this came up in survey data and was notable to include as an opportunity for improvement. Next, human resource investment and resource allocation. So some strengths, the staff. The district is not experiencing a staffing crisis comparable to many other districts throughout this country, which is important. Uh, there's a very strong sense of community, as I shared earlier, and there is longstanding tenure. Folks stay a long time. They're proud of that and that's both with your teachers, administrators and your paraprofessionals. Um, which is also very important and notable. Professional development offerings. There are lots of P D offerings in this district to address differentiation in particular, as well as other topics. In terms of opportunities, the role of the I E P team and the role of the child study team. Um, you know, we noted some inconsistencies in the implementation of that role in the district. Specifically I E P development and responsibility, uh, in terms of. Who each player is and making sure that it functions as, uh, an I E P team of individual equals. Who are all working toward the student and doing so in a merits consistent with state and federal regulation. Uh, staffing allocations, the district implements an assistant model for staffing allocation or caseload balancing. So now we go to the recommendations. So the idea here, we offer recommendations. And districts will say, what do you mean? Here are all these recommendations. We offer these recommendations to the districts, the district can then say, uh, let's action plan around this. Let's make them ours. Let's think about how this may be a one-year, a two-year, a three-year, maybe even a five-year. Um, it's not our goal to dictate for the district what recommendations it should and shouldn't take. Um, and I'm really, I have to say also very, um, pleased that the district's been so proactive since receiving this information. And already beginning that process, which they'll be sharing this evening, um, as we tag team this presentation. Next slide. So multi-tiered system of support. Um, build on the processes you already have. You have started the work. Continue the work the way you're doing. Data monitoring, this is huge. If you don't collect the data and do it consistently, sometimes it's all for naught. Um, or it's not as useful as it could be. And creating a user manual, making sure that everyone is speaking from the same language. Uh, and the good news is that as a state, the Department of Ed has had a discussion around this. It's created a manual as a guide. There are other guides out there, but creating this and thinking about it is really important. So now I'm going to give it to the district.
So I'm up first. Yes, that's all right. Um, so some are directly related to special ed, some are more global, quite honestly, uh, from the district perspective. And M T S S is not new. This is something, uh, we've talked about before, even in meetings as, as our Board of Education meetings. Uh, besides creating a, a manual, which is something we'll be working on for the summer. Matt had mentioned about data utilization and really tracking that. And I do believe that our new student information system with OnCours. It's going to be much more user-friendly and has a lot more functionality than we have right now with our current system. We've talked about master schedules and we spent time in this meeting, you know, back in March, talking about the high school schedule and changes. And a flex period where kids can access all their teachers to get additional support. So that really is when we talk about the triangle that Matt, you know, mentioned before. That really is a tier-two intervention that we're going to have in place starting next year. And then we're going to be looking as we revamp our elementary schedules and our new middle school schedule. To have that flex time built in as well, so we can access our students. We've talked about in the past where sometimes right now, unfortunately, some of our students get pulled out of a poor area like math. To get extra support in math in a small group instruction setting. And we don't really want to do that. We want to make sure our master schedules are set up so they're not being pulled out of the class. That they're, you know, getting supported and we want to make sure that they're being exposed to the, um, curriculum for that grade lo- level on an annual basis. So this is something that we will be working on. It's not a one-year thing. Um, this will be something we'll be working over the next three to five years. You're going to be hearing a lot about systems of interventions in this pyramid. Matt, all right.
The next, uh, redesign and rebrand of supplemental study. The idea really is thinking about a redesign of what supplemental study is. By providing written protocols and consistent expla- explanations for students and staff. Um, we recommend the instruction occur, uh, by special education teachers. We recommend the focus, the untargeted areas of instruction specific to child's I E P goals. Individualized education plan goals. And we recommend there be professional development for special education teachers on supplemental studying.
I'd like to first, uh, thank, uh, our superintendent, Mr. Suzo, the board, as well as our parents and our child study team, our staff. For even participating in this process. It's been very helpful for me to be able to get the information and to be able to expedite. And focus on what we need to focus on. This, something like this would have taken a couple of years. But, you know, uh, I'm, I'm fortunate enough to get the information in a couple of months, you know, within a year. So, thank you, everybody. Couple of things, uh, we want to do to, uh, redesign and rebrand our supplemental study program. I said, I've probably heard the term supplemental more this year than I've ever heard in my life. So one of the things that we're going to do is rename, uh, the course along with writing a new curriculum. Uh, that will be taking place in, uh, the summer of twenty twenty-three. And we're looking forward to that. We have some staff that are, are really good at curriculum writing. And again, that will take place this summer. Uh, we're going to look at different grade bands, uh, because the needs for a seventh grade student may be different than a twelfth grade student. So we want to break it out even further. Uh, starting in twenty-three, twenty-four school year, we'll focus on executive functioning skills. That's organization, uh, test-taking, reading, study strategies, again, making it more focused. Uh, the criteria will be utilized when recommended students with an I E P. Uh, we look at students' current program, their, their schedule, all of those things. And then we can, uh, better determine whether they even need, uh, the supplemental studies. And with our new schedule starting next year, um, students will receive even more, uh, support. So that's a really good thing. Special education teachers will be trained, uh, during, uh, the summer, uh, in August on the new curriculum. Uh, we want to make sure that everybody is aware, everybody's on board with what we're doing. Uh, the course will only be taught by special education teachers, although we have really, really, really great general education teachers. We thought it would be best since our, uh, special education, special education teachers are used to modification accommodations. It will be best that they provide, uh, services. Uh, student placement will be evaluated at the semester break. This provides a little more flexibility. For students instead of being in a course for a year where they may not actually need it. Uh, they can leave, you know, at the end of the semester and, and enroll in a different, uh, course. And it will be a five-credit course, two and a half credits for each semester. And will be graded with a pass fail. We thought, uh, with the type of class that it would be, that a pass fail, uh, model would be best for it.
Next, equity and access to advanced placement for students with disabilities. Uh, in terms of planning, our recommendation is to develop a coherent plan across grade levels in schools to enable a higher proportion of. Potentially qualified students with disabilities to benefit from advanced academic studies or courses. We recommend, uh, written guidance, uh, and other information C S T teams. Um, you know, it's very specific to advanced place courses. And for goals and targets, we recommend the district establish a goal and target to increase current enrollment. Of students with disabilities and advanced placement or other enrichment, advanced courses and to monitor data on a quarterly basis.
So equity and access have been a big theme in our district for all students, quite honestly. Um, so something that we're really going to dig into this summer specifically. Is to identify any barriers that we may have to have, that our students with disabilities. Um, may not have been able to in the past access either an honors or an A P course. It's important that we develop master schedules. So if a student, um, let's say needs a collaborative class for the special education and a general education teacher. Um, or even a paraprofessional in an honors or an A P, you know, we can't say, no, that's not something we can provide, right? We have to make sure that we have that in place so that class is accessible to that student. Um, the flex period, I think, is going to play a pretty significant role because students will have access to all their teachers. It's a built-in thirty minutes every day where, um, they can access their A P or their honors teacher to be able to get extra support and help. Uh, and this really working with our child study team to develop, you know, kind of an idea of who are our students on that roadmap. That haven't identified I E P and perhaps could be candidates to take some higher level classes. And then a data dig, right? Which we've been doing over the last couple of years. So this was not a surprise to me when we got this in the report. Uh, we had been looking, quite honestly, at all of our honors and A P classes. And to see the demographic makeups and, and what they look like and where we're, um, lacking and how we can identify those barriers and bring down those barriers. Provide more access, not only for our students with I E Ps, but for all of our students.
Next, out of district placements, um, and these are children whose I E P teams have made a determination to send the child out of district. Um, because that was considered part of, of their least restricted environment. Um, in terms of communication, we recommend the district talk with parents and child study team members who sought or obtained. Out of district placement to better understand the motivations and any gaps. Further study, uh, visit or obtain other information about the most common out-of-district placements. Uh, and ascertain, uh, how these resources are different from currently available districts. Uh, currently available, I mean, resources here in the district. Then cost, consider the cost of the placement, um, transportation, um, and, and really thinking about. At the end of the day, is it something that could be replicated here in the district at the same, in the same manner?
So just as Matt was just, uh, informing us, uh, one of the things we want to do is look at our student, uh, our current student profile. Of the students that we send out of this, uh, what are their needs? What are their programs? Is it a particular trend, uh, services, materials, resources that we currently don't have? Those are the things that we need to look at. So. Meeting with our staff, uh, talking about our out-of-district students, looking at their needs. And then looking at what we have right now, our services, our resources, our materials. What do we need to be able to provide quality programming for those students? That would be our next step. And again, developing a plan, we're looking at two to three years. Uh, for a plan because we want to be ready. We just don't want to have students come back and not be prepared, not have services. Not have the resources, not have the materials. We wouldn't want that and I'm sure parents wouldn't want that as well. So we want our parents and our students to be ready, but we want to be ready as well.
Five, uh, I E P individualized education plan development. Um, there are a bunch of bullets on this one. The first recommendations around written protocols. And this is similar to another one around standard operating procedures. Uh, as it relates to I E P development, um, that are appropriate and consistent across the district. I E P goals, every I E P has a set of goals that are individualized to that child. Uh, ensure the I E P goals are based on student needs identified in the present levels of academic and functional performance. Uh, and they're not created or influenced by district limitations. Monitoring I E Ps, establish, uh, implement a process for periodically reviewing the I E Ps. Electronic data repository, uh, study electronic data repositories to improve data collection. And lastly, collaboration, foster positive collaboration by planning more time between gen ed and special ed. Uh, teachers, uh, so they can further collaborate on the I E P.
So we certainly want to, uh, provide and, and that's a part of our plan to provide professional development. For our staff going forward, starting in our summer and continuing throughout the year. We think it's important for them to understand goal writing, writing SMART goals, being able to monitor those goals and adjust them. As needed, whether it's progress monitoring, uh, report cards and reviews. Evaluation process, wherever it is, making sure that we not only create really good goals, but we monitor those goals and adjust as needed. Uh, provide professional development for staff and stakeholders for, uh, the roles of the I E P team. Although everyone plays an equal role, everyone has a different role in the team. We know that successful teams, people have different things that they need to do for it to be successful. So our goal is to have everyone understand their role even better. So that will be a successful team and it will ultimately benefit our students. And, uh, creating a new master schedule, I know for our staff, it's probably one of the most requested features, so to speak, of this whole process. So, uh, we want to provide common planning time for our general education, special education teachers, whether it's in a collaborative setting. Or just talking about students preparing for A and reviews, again, meetings, things of that nature. Making sure that they have time to talk and to instruct.
Six, expanding the least restricted environment continuum. Gen ed classrooms establish a maximum student, uh, classroom ratio for students with and without disabilities. The next collaborative teaching model, draft guidance for collaborative teaching. Uh, the next co-taught instruction, uh, draft guidance for the delivery of co-taught instruction. And the next being professional development, making sure that all of those topics, teachers have added a professional development. So they understand what that entails.
So we've been talking a lot this year about instructional strategies and instructional models. It's not something new. Um, to our board meetings or in the district. It's really important for us to define, um, what our model is for collaborative teaching. When I mean collaborative teaching, I mean a teacher, where there's a general education teacher in a classroom and a special education teacher in a classroom. And you have maybe fifteen or twenty students and there's a mix of general education and special education students. The good news is the work that we're doing with all of our staff right now is no different from what we want in that type of collaborative classroom. The biggest difference is there's two, two adults in that room, which is going to make it even easier. So it's in line with our instructional models for our small group instruction that we've been talking about. And things like, you know, blended and personalized learning and station rotation. However, you have two adults in the room. So this August, uh, we'll be doing some training with our collaborative partnerships district-wide as part of our teacher orientation. When our staff returns, we want to make sure that we're crystal clear on what our expectations are for what a collaborative classroom looks like. And quite honestly, we want to tap into some of our very successful, because we have them. Collaborative teaching relationships within the district and have them be out at the forefront and model for some of our other folks. And especially for some of our new staff, what that system looks like and what that relationship is all about. So that's really, really important. We mentioned before about master schedulers and James mentioned it as well about common planning time. Because we are a small di- district, sometimes one of the challenges is collaborative partnerships change from year to year. Um, and like anything else, the longer you work with an individual, that relationship typically will get better. You know you reach your strengths, your, your challenges. So we're really going to try to develop some consistency with our collaborative partners over multiple years. Rather than working with one person and the next year it's somebody new. And then that common planning time. So that time within the school day built within our master schedule, um, where folks can meet and kind of co-plan. So when they are in front of students, everyone has a clear indication of, of what, you know, the plan is going to be. And then obviously this is something we want to continue to monitor. So this won't be a one-shot deal in August where we do training on collaborative teaching. We want to provide support to our collaborative teachers throughout the entire school year. And then make that as an annual basis, right? Not only for our new staff that we hire, but for our new teams that we develop on an annual basis. To make sure that they have that training and everyone's clear on the expectations before the school year starts.
All right, next, uh, supporting duly identified students. So those who are English language learners. And also, uh, classified, uh, as having in a special education. Uh, track trends and identification rates. Um, we included within the report a risk ratio as it relates to measuring, um, student trends. And, and really how to assess risk. Data review and hypothesis, further looking at the data, uh, leveraging the formula that we included in the report and subsequently studying it over time. Follow-up action, of course. If you're seeing trends that are not necessarily favorable. Determine what's possibly the root cause and monitor it. Uh, subsequently guidance, training and support. I think a lot of what this is about is really. Um, making sure that folks are informed. making sure that folks are informed, they're getting the training they need, they're getting the support they need. Because this is an area that a lot of districts in New Jersey face. Is really making sure that a child who's an English language learner isn't being classified because of the language barrier, but in fact of a disability. And they also may happen to speak another native language.
So again, really making sure it's been a topic of last year's ESL study that we did, and then this year's obviously special education study. Really taking a look at our numbers on an annual basis to see how many students that we have that are classified, that are ELL students. Really digging in to see, you know, the whole difference as Matt had mentioned between a learning disability and a language barrier. I know we've had conversations already with our child study team. It's not an easy thing to do, even within the field, outside of South Hunterdon. There's a lot of, I feel like we're still kind of working through from a best practice side of things of how to truly best evaluate an ELL student when we suspect that there could be a disability. And that can be a challenge. So that's something we're going to continue to look to grow from a professional development side. And again, annually, as part of our data dig, really examining that data to see kind of if we see an increase in the number of students that are being identified they're ELL, you know, that could be a concern. We really need to look again at our practices.
Eight, establish district-wide vision for special education. And nine, special education policy and procedure manual, which is something we talked about before. So collaborative vision with representatives of district leadership. With district staff, with parents, create a collaborative district-wide vision for special education. And policy and procedures manual, develop an interactive web-based manual that provides support as it relates to special education operating procedures and practices.
I'd like to say we've already started working on our vision statement. We started a draft. With the staff, we'll be sharing it with our CPAC group, sharing it with the board. And it's something that, again, we want to create this collaborative unified vision for the special education department and special education in South Hunterdon Regional School District. Collaborate with stakeholders to create special education policy and procedures. Although special education is primarily guided by special education law in New Jersey and federal law, we do recognize that there's a need to put a lot of this information in one place for our staff and whoever else needs to see it, whether it's the law along with our NTSS manual, other information, materials, forms, things like that. So that's one of the things that we're looking at building.
Ten, elevate rigor. Professional development on this item, we recommend the district ensure that all professional development be designed and delivered in a manner that elevates rigor, instructional rigor and inclusivity of students with disabilities. Resources include how this information will be supported with necessary material and human resources.
So again, not something new. This has been on our radar for about a year. Our blended learning cohort too this year of teachers, we've been focusing a lot of our professional development time on specifically taking a look at the resources that we're putting in front of kids. And being able to do a self-assessment as far as the level of the rigor, but really wanting to push our kids to higher levels. The other piece of it too is that we've done a lot of work this year with teachers focusing on essential standards. And making sure that we're really breaking down, what is it students need to absolutely know and be able to do? Within each course, within each grade level and each content area. That's been a really big piece. You'll see on this slide, there's actually a link and it's a document we've been utilizing from the administrative side. And even with some of our teachers to kind of take materials that they're putting in front of students and do their own analysis as far as the rigor and where things are strong and maybe things need to be improved upon. So that's really, really important. It can, will continue to be a core practice that we'll be focusing on with our staff moving forward and making sure that, you know, teachers are responsible for so many standards within a school year. It's really important that we're focused, laser focused specifically on our standards. It's part of our lesson planning design next year where we're asking teachers to identify two to three standards that they're focusing on in a lesson rather than maybe seven or eight or nine. So we can kind of be laser focused and really have an understanding to see, you know, what we're trying to measure in our students.
Eleven, parent trainings and twelve, special education parent advisory group, CPAC. So a parent training plan, we recommend a consultation with representatives of the parent groups. Develop a training plan for families in areas by IP process, roll the CSD or child study team. Overall advice and guidance to support families. And increase participation in special education parent advisory, your parent advisory group. In the manner by which you further develop, enhance and bring folks to the table as it relates to the important work that CPACs do.
I'd like to say we started this work this year and we have some really good, really excited and ignited parents to be a part of our group. They've already started the mission statement. That's been shared out, we'll eventually share it out with everyone. We're going to continue to share the special education findings. We shared some with our CPAC group, but we're going to share the rest of this, of course, they'll have the ability to read the entire report. So once we meet, we'll be able to answer any questions that they may have. Explore additional forms of communication, particularly for our ELL students. But not only our ELL students, our students of color, students who may not work or live in the districts. Our families who may not live in the district, really just trying to provide forms of communication. I know that's a part of our larger strategic plan as well, looking at the communication, how we communicate. And the methods and that manner. Development and entry survey to garner presentation topics as we talk about some of our parent presentations and other types of presentations. We want to get feedback, whether it's autism, dyslexia, the IP process, we want to get that feedback from everyone. Creation of our CPAC material information pamphlet flyers, guides, I can tell you that our CPAC group. He's Mr. Dialling has been elected as the president or the lead liaison of the organization so far. So I'm looking forward to working them and the entire creation of, or the development of CPAC calendar and presentation. Presentations, that's something else that we want to look at as well. Making sure when we meet as a group. Looking at how our schedule is going to lay out for the entire year. So we'll be able to share that out in advance with everyone.
And then one thing I'll just add in reference to pool of three, there's actually on our personnel agenda tonight. The recommendation to hire a bilingual secretary when we begin our child study office. So again, next year, now we will have two bilingual secretaries rather than just one.
Well, with that, we've reached the end of the presentation, but I would like to thank the district for. And when I say the district, I mean all the teachers and administrators and folks. Really made this process such an easy one. It's not necessarily something that's easy to look in the mirror and see where you're doing things well and where there may be challenges. And folks in this district took it, embraced it, and we really appreciated that. So thank you very much for that.
And I just want to follow up too and say again, thank you to all of our staff. Especially our staff, special education staff and our child study team. I know this is not easy, right? You know, when there's an announcement, there's going to be a review, people get nervous, you know, first thing they start thinking is what is he up to now? But it's really just to improve, right? And I think that's what this is all about. For us to really focus on what we're doing well and then focus on areas of, you know, need that we need, you know, moving forward and make sure we support our staff. So I appreciate all the participation that happens over the eight months. We're only going to get better from this. So again, Matt, thank you. James, thank you. Before we move on to my update and then public comment, is there any question the board has for Matt, James or I related to the special education review?
So I don't have a question, but when we first saw this presentation, at least in the raw form, I had asked the team to go back and give it an alignment to our, what we're doing in our district. The report had just the recommendation. So thank you for the recommendations. But thank you to Dr. Neff and Mr. Swizzo for going back and saying, this is what we're doing to make these suggested improvements, et cetera. I'm excited to see that many of those things are already being done this year or have begun earlier this year. In response to some of the recent comments about test scores and things like that, I just want to call out that we didn't wait to get this report. We started making changes immediately. So I just want to thank you all for that. And I liked your tag team approach, by the way, that was perfect. That's the first thing. So I just wanted to thank you for that. I do want to ask one thing, and that is there's a lot of stuff here that we're talking about either starting, getting started with, or doing. And I'd like to kind of challenge you all to take an assessment after a period of time. I don't know what the right period of time is. Three years is too long. Maybe it's six months, maybe it's a school year, but I do ask that you come back to the board after a period of time that we can discuss, you know, in the future, but or after you've had a chance to talk about it. But I do want to challenge you, I want to know how we're doing against this plan. There is a lot of stuff here and I know some of it's already underway and some of it's getting started, but I want to hear what, what we are doing. What's the impact? And, you know, what's next in terms of what we learned from that? So, you know, again, it's a constant improvement. I understand. Thank you.
I just had a question and it's really more just because I don't know what what the term means, but about when you're talking about the risk ratio. And that had to do with, I believe, you know, the number of kids in a class that have an IEP versus those who do not. And they're, you were talking about a risk ratio and I was wondering if you just explained a little bit over.
The big picture of what risk ratio means is identifying or over identifying a certain population of individuals, classifying them. That perhaps may be disproportionate. And that's a term that's used by the federal government, by the state government, and there is within the report, a formula district can actually use. But look at the proportions of students that are being classified as having special needs. To really look at your population as a whole and then look at how you're classifying students to make sure that you're not over identifying or possibly under identifying populations of students.
How, how do you determine whether or not it's over or under identified?
Well, so looking at the total population of your students, looking at the composition. And then really looking at both the composition, but then looking at your classification composition, making comparisons and using this formula, which is actually something that the state Department of Education as well as a federal state, the federal Department of Education uses something similar in assessing risk.
It also comes down to percentage of students that are classified. So on average, the average percentage in the state of New Jersey is about fifteen percent of your student population. We are over that. We're probably around nineteen percent, I think, right now. Again, that's something, when you see that number, we need to look at, dig into and figure out why.
And then I just had one, one other question and it kind of relates to what Tracy was asking, which is you know, if you go back and look at this report and, you know, look for kind of, like, is there a way to have measurable outcomes? It seems to me like it might be difficult. You know, how do you determine whether or not following the plans set forth here is whether or not it's being followed and things are getting better or if they're not getting better, you know?
For me, I mean, just after what Tracy said, my first thought process is to really talk about metrics to evaluate each one of these recommendations. So like, you know, obviously with CPAC and our parent piece, there could be parent surveys, different things about, you know, their perception of the special education process. And then there's others that will be more kind of like data-driven specifically. So I think James and I can kind of sit down and really think about what are some metrics we could use for each one of these recommendations? And phase out when we think it's a good time to start evaluating them and then eventually bring it back to the board and curriculum committee.
Any other questions from the board? I did have one, nobody else has a question, but I think item four, I don't apologize, I wasn't taking it. Item four was referring to out of district placements and, you know, taking a look at where the gaps are and things like that. So my question is in the course of the the data gathering for this report, did you, do you have some data to that or is that something that still needs to be, be done?
We did, we did look at your out of district numbers as a start. I think the, the thing about out of district is that it's highly individualized. Highly individualized. And it's, it's, it's one thing to look at the data. It's another thing to really drill down and look at kind of the history. We're talking not just a year or two, but really what's the history in terms of why children go to an out of district placement? Which is why we made the recommendation we did.
Okay, very good. And then Dr. Neff said the CPAC is meeting either later of this month or in June, is that correct?
June, yes.
And what is the date of that?
June first.
June the first, those meetings are done virtually, am I correct?
Yes.
But they're Zoom meetings, so it's easy for parents to participate?
Yeah, very easy to participate. We've been sending out information, it's on our Facebook page as well as the website. And again, we're looking forward to having the group. They have some really good ideas. We have some really good ideas. So I think it's going to be a really good thing going forward.
Any other questions from, from the board? If not, thank you very much for the, for the detailed reporting, all the time you spent. And we will let Tony call us tomorrow.
Yeah, so I'll be quick. I know you're probably reported out, but I did want to give an update just on a couple of things. Moving forward, specifically school construction update, I just wanted to talk a little bit about, you heard the word encore thrown around tonight. We've talked about it before, but it is upon us. So I really want to just mention a few things about that. I do want to acknowledge a question was asked at our last meeting about West Anwell School Performance Report. So I want to kind of dig into that and share some details about what we found out. And I do want to give an update about our therapy goal program. So just a couple of things, a reminder, just to parents or any community members. You know, where can you get updates about school construction projects? Go to our website on the homepage and I circled on the bottom, school construction projects. You click on that link, typically anything that we share, right now, the information's on there for the Zoom link for the meeting we'll be having in Lambertville. Which I'll talk about in a second, but that is your most up to date, where you'll kind of find. And as we go through our projects, you know, there'll be a lot of information, pictures and all kinds of different things that will be uploaded to that site. So just a reminder, we've been putting this out. I know it's been in Lambertville Matters over the last three or four weeks, it's been on our social media. But we are going to be having, I'm going to be hosting with Mayor Noick this Wednesday night at seven o'clock. We're going to be in the LPS library, but it will also be via Zoom. So if folks can't join in person. The Zoom link is here, it's also on our website. And really what we're going to talk about is the overall construction project. And anyone can come to this, but we are really targeting folks that live right in the area of LPS. Because obviously for the next twelve months, there's going to be a lot happening. So we want to be able to answer their questions. Try to give them some ideas as far as what's going to be happening, when, and also provide vehicle for them to get on an email list. You know, a community list that was started several months ago, where they can get updates related to the buildings a little bit more frequently than the general public. Just because they live in the area and especially if there's going to be, you know, machinery or something going on that it would impact a road or whatever it may be. We can kind of let them know in advance so they're in the loop because obviously I know living with this for the next twelve months may be challenging. So that is for Wednesday night. And then just an update on the five eight building. So last Tuesday night. I did a courtesy review with some of our other folks, architects, folks along that, those lines. In front of the West Anwell Planning Board, it was a courtesy review on the five eight building project. So we are waiting for a letter from the planning board that basically says that our plan is consistent with the West Anwell Master Community Plan. It was acknowledged during that meeting that it is. But we just need the letter to move forward. They have forty-five days to issue that letter from May second because that's when we submitted our application. Obviously, we're hoping we get it as soon as possible because that really is right now the dom- Obviously, we're hoping we get it as soon as possible, um, because that really is right now the domino that will push down all the rest of the dominos. Um, if you look at bullet number two, we have everything into DNR for approval from the district side of things. The only thing they need is the letter from the township that I referred to from the planning board meeting last week. So as soon as we get that letter, they will issue our DNR permit. Um, septic approval. We are waiting for the Township Board of Health to sign the application. So they don't review it. They literally just have to sign it. So then we can submit it to the DEP. So we're waiting for that. Um, if you looked at the site at all, you've noticed there's a lot of stakes, a lot of flags on stake. So our surveyor did come out and stake out the site for the five eight building and our contractor is ready to start tomorrow. We're just waiting on, you know, the final process of the permits to be completed. So I just wanted everyone to be in the loop on the five eight. All right. So new student information system. So Encourse is coming, right? You're going to hear a lot about this. Um, it will be replacing Aspen for the twenty three, twenty four school year and beyond. Uh, we began our training with all of our staff on Monday, May eleventh. And we will continue with our training uh in August. We have a group of teachers and staff members called Encourse Champions. They're going to be responsible for turnkeying a lot of our training. They participated in the training um two weeks ago and then had their second training today for about two hours. So we're in a really good place as far as their level of comfort with the system. We will be sending out information to parents and students in August. There'll be tutorial videos. We'll really walk you through. There'll be a section on our homepage of our website with all the tutorial videos and a lot of information to help navigate parents on getting access to the system, how to utilize the system. I'm hoping that you'll find the interface is much more user friendly um than Aspen. I think so far, the general consensus, I know there was a comment made by one of our teachers in the training today saying that I don't even know if we need us on course champions because this is pretty user friendly. I think anyone could pick it up. So that was good for me to hear, um, exciting for me to hear. Um, as our students return in the beginning of September, we'll do some additional trainings with them um on how to utilize the system as far as the access to their assignments, things along those lines. We will do that as well with our parents. That will be ongoing. It's not going to be a one shot deal. We know parents will need continued support with that. And keep in mind, this is really a three year implementation. There's a variety of different components we'll be using um that will be introducing to staff and then eventually parents. It's a big job, so we can't do it all in one shot, right? We really need to kind of phase it in. So we'll be communicating more information about that, you know, throughout the summer and what year one looks like, year two looks like, year three looks like. So parents and students and our staff are in a good place to implement this as smoothly as possible. This is a big lift. A student information system is a lot, a lot of work. So kudos to our staff. I know there's a lot on their plate already with things, but I think this will make staff student and parent like much more easier than it is right now. So more information will be shared, but I just kind of wanted to remind everybody it's on the horizon. All right. So let's talk about the West Anwell School Performance Report. So at the bottom is the chart, which a lot of folks saw, and it caused some concerns, and there was some questions specifically about, you know, why did West Anwell Schools were so much lower than the Lambertville Public School and then obviously our middle school and our high school? So let me acknowledge a few things. First of all, this is something that's been on our radar since we presented our assessment scores from last spring back in the fall with Mr. Hewitt. So this is not something that is a surprise. Um, we have a plan in place. We've shared with our plans in place with our instructional coaches, all the different things that we're doing with our interventions for students. Um, this metric, though, calls some questions from our perspective about how exactly the DOE came to these numbers and kind of what that looks like. So after digging in, I wanted to kind of share what that information looks like. And then just talk about what it will mean moving forward. So this came out back in April and it hit the papers and you know, the performance reports for all school districts. We had questions just like the community did. We're not understanding what metrics really went into this. Keep in mind, typically when these performance reports are released, the release specifically on state assessment scores. But we haven't had state assessment scores other than last year and then several years before that because of COVID. So our question was, what exactly were the metrics that went in to assigning these numbers and where did they come from? So after discussing it with the NJ DOE, we discovered that they used a different method for two thousand twenty one, twenty two called the Relative School Improvement Measure or RISM. Um, and this is due to the fact that there was no state testing in two thousand nineteen, twenty and two thousand twenty, twenty one because of COVID. So the old way that that the state would always do it is they would look from year to year with state assessment data and they would measure growth along the way. And based on that, they would determine performance reports. Because they didn't have that, because we haven't had state testing, they had to get a waiver and come up with some type of metric. So this is what they came up with to use just for this year. So the scores were based on the following. English Language Arts Growth Proficiency, Math Growth Proficiency, Absenteeism. I do want to note that when we look at the comparisons with absenteeism, the rate for West Anwell in two thousand seventeen, eighteen was three percent and went up to seven point nine percent for twenty one, twenty two. Probably not surprising because we were still coming off COVID and quite honestly, we were telling kids to stay home. If there was symptoms, this, that and the other. So it doesn't surprise me. Our our rates for our other schools were higher than they typically would be as well, but that factored into it. And then West Anwell, and this is something that has not been done for a long time, was also compared to other schools with similar demographics. So based on socioeconomic status, the demographics, number of BLL students. So what does that mean? It means that West Anwell was not compared to LPS. They were never compared apples and oranges because their demographics are totally different. What they were compared to other schools in the state that have similar demographics. So that was something that was different. It's important to note that we've been told by the state that this was a one shot deal, right? This was something to meet the federal government regulation that there has to be some system in place and there has to be something to measure accountability. But the DOE has told us they will rerun the accountability this coming fall, reverting back to its old measure now that we'll have testing from two thousand twenty one and twenty two and the testing that our students just finished within the last week. And they will take that data and then utilize the measured growth. They weren't, they won't be using other things like absenteeism, things along those lines. It will be measured specifically on that growth with those assessment scores. So they wanted to be crystal clear that, you know, moving forward, this was a one shot thing. They're going back to their old system. They had to use something and that's what the score was based on. Now, again, as I said in the beginning, we acknowledge, we acknowledge back in October, November that there's areas growth with the West Anwell School Performance Report. All right, that's on our radar. We have a plan in place. We've shared with that plan is is in place. Uh, but I just wanted to be crystal clear that there was a different metric that was used this year and we will move back to the metric before. I also just want to acknowledge a couple of things because I was and I and I have to say this, right? On behalf of our staff and our kids, I was at a meet a meeting recently and someone in the meeting referred to us as a failing district. And I don't agree with that. All right. I think that quite honestly is not fair to our staff and is not fair to our kids. And a couple of things that I just want to mention because I know there's an emphasis on test scores, right? I get all that. And I know that they're important, right? And they're always going to be a measure of a performance of a district. But if you look at the recent statistics, eighty percent of colleges and universities this coming fall are no longer using ACT or SATs. Right? Not going to be part of the process for admissions. And then you can see on the other one, you know, the second uh fault that I have here. Again, there there's a strong feeling that schools recognize that a standardized test does not measure academic merit. Okay, so in my opinion, yes, it's an area of focus. We want to do better, but it's not the be all end all for us to determine whether or not our kids are succeeding. And look at the graph, right? So these are colleges starting back, we look all the way back to nineteen eighty seven, that no longer accepted SATs. Or if you're looking at the chart, it says test blind, score free. That means you can take the test and submit it, but they're not going to look at it and determine acceptance. It's like it's not there. Look how that graph has gone over the last twenty something years. All right. Almost all colleges now have recognized that in, at least when I was in high school, that was the be all end all, right? You had to go through every test prep. That SAT was either getting in or getting you out. That is not the case anymore. And when you look at our kids, right? Our kids are doing well. This is the class of two thousand twenty three. Look at some of the colleges and universities that are on that list. That is an impressive list. That is a credit to our staff. That is a credit to our kids. And it's also a credit to our counseling department. Right? Who's been working hard and this has been a major focus with the program review that we did several years ago. There are some pop knot schools that our kids will be represented in next year, and I'm proud of that list. I'm very proud of that list. The board should be proud of that list and the community should be proud of that list. So again, not downplaying the scores. I'm not saying that they're not important, but they are not the only thing that determines whether or not we are successful. Now, our therapy transitioning. We graduated. So the therapy dog program is complete. And kudos to our staff who you see on these slides because they gave up their life every Tuesday from four to five o'clock from July sixteenth last summer through last Tuesday. That is a lot of time and commitment, right? And going through tests and literally our last assessment, it felt like it was the Westminster Dog Show where we had to sit in a chair at the far end of the gym and have people yelling out commands. We had to do all these things and be evaluated. We were stressed, right? The staff, the folks there even were, you know, as part of this, we were really stressed going into the to the test. It was a lot of work. So for Mr. Harris and Mr. Miller, who were, you know, Mr. Miller, who was here before, um, for Mrs. Isabelle at West Anwell, and I love Gary and Gary's picture. That's an awesome picture, Mr. Peterson. Um, Ms. Barrett, Ms. Conway, both at LPS. Myself and Mr. Miller. And then Ms. Patori, who, full disclosure, she's been experiencing some medical issues over the last couple of weeks and still found a way to get her tested. So that is amazing. So her and Pinto are certified. So we have now nine certified therapy dogs that are completely done with the program. We're so excited. We're going to start introducing them the last couple of weeks of school before we end. And then next year for the fall, we'll have a whole plan with the goal being in mind that we will have a therapy dog in every building every day in the entire school year. So again, thank you to the board for supporting this. Because of, you know, obviously we couldn't have done it without your support. But again, our staff, nobody got paid for this, right? This is all on your own free time. And uh, they just did an amazing job. So I just want to give them a round of applause. And then my last slide, just a reminder. Last day of school, Wednesday, June seventh. So a little more than two weeks away, believe it or not. The school year will be over. So uh, it's coming. So again, thank you, everyone. And the board, any questions before we open up the public comment, which can be questioned about anything? You know, for the evening or beyond, any questions from the board about my update?
I have no questions, but I will just have the, you know, as in relation to the end of the school year, we just had an amazing um junior, senior, sort of had a wonderful time at the place that they went and White House Station.
Yep.
Um, spring sports are winding down. Um, so they are, you know, there are still playing, actually going on today. Uh, but there's still lots of stuff going on, wanting to do.
And graduation, June seventh, one o'clock. Outside on the field.
Of the weather cooperate. Um, with that, uh, we'll move to the uh period of public comment. So um, I encourage you, if you have anything you want to say, statement you want to make to the board, um, if you have a question about the um, the report, uh, we will try to answer. Someone will try to answer. We still have Matt and Dr. Neves appear. Um, so with that, um, we ask you to let us know your name and where you're from and uh Miss Badger looks like you're writing some word of.
I originally wanted to address safety and security, um, but I feel like I now need to address the test scores. Um, because I did originally ask that question and I was told that that score was a mistake, that it was incorrect. Um, which I was surprised to find out that it is true. That is actually our summative score. Um, I don't think anybody's questioning whether or not West Anwell is being compared to Lambertville. But the fact remains that the very first thing that was at the top of that was proficiency tests that was driving the number there. And I think the point being made is that for the last several years, West Anwell School, it feels to many parents who have students in that school that it has declined in quality, engagement. Parents that don't feel connected to the school. I understand that you all have a small group of parents that you hear the most from and, you know, everything's great and wonderful. But I'm telling you that it's not, and it hasn't been. And that the students who have been going through that school for the last several school years deserved to be treated just as well as every other student in this district, and it didn't feel that way. And it's kind of a slap in the face for you guys to sit there and laugh about therapy dogs when I don't feel that my students are getting basic education and that parents were not invited into the building anymore. We've been locked out. We've been iced out of so many things. It it it's like a farce. Honestly, we look at stuff that's happening at the Lambertville Public School. There's beautiful websites and calendars and invitations for parents to do things. We don't have that at West Anwell. We haven't had it for the last several years. It has not been the case. Are like the fact remains that that score is low. We are lower than where we should be. I I feel like what you've done is tried to sugarcoat it and gloss over it with a a a lot of other things and then talk about that test scores aren't that important. I'll send you an article tomorrow that was just written about how we need to go back to to doing standardized tests because this experiment of not testing kids isn't working out so well. And ACT and SATs are not the same. That's not a proficiency test. We're talking about basic proficiency of state standards that our kids are not doing well on. It's not a joke. Therapy dogs are not helping that situation. It feels like you're not taking it serious, honestly. That that's very disheartening to me, what you all just, what you all just went through. It, you know, I love this school. I I I have done everything I can to help support my school and my teachers and you're not listening to the parents who aren't happy because you don't care to.
So hi, Michael Strauss from West Anwell. Um, so Tony, first, I do have to say I appreciate your defense and faith in our staff and students. Um, I also do have to stress that the community is looking for those scores to improve. Um, but I also am part of this community and I know our staff and students and I can't wait to actually see it happen. Um, with that said, I do kind of want to jump into the special education um presentation. Um, I want to thank the staff, the consultants for participating. Um, I also want to thank the parents because uh, I was part of the groups. Um, I've seen the passion. I've seen the participation. Um, and now seeing the results and actually seeing it honestly conveyed was really something that I was proud to see. Um, I want to make one point um about the duly identified students and the perception of a disproportion of classification. Um, I was glad to hear the words data and training involved there, uh, because it's not just kind of a a perception. It's actually looking at it as something that we can perhaps do better on, or perhaps we're doing really well on, but let's keep an eye on that data. Um, in discussions during the strategic planning process, um, the pre-K program was looked at as kind of an awesome resource, not only for ELL, ELL, but um, I also think it's applicable here that we have an opportunity to kind of really look at the data and how that can affect us as a district for years to come. Um, data monitoring. It was another thing that was part of of the presentation. I'm just curious whether Encourse is going to help us in that. So, okay, I I was pretty sure that that was what it was. Um, so um, in our last presentation, it looked like twenty one percent of our budget was based on special education. Um, and I'm guessing a lot of that has to do with out of district placement. I'm glad again to see part of this report does say that out of district um, placement is an opportunity for us. I'm just wondering if you can kind of give new buildings, regionalization, are there opportunities to improve that and to reduce that spend from that for the LRE and for um for getting kids back into district? Thank you.
So I think to answer your question, I think there is because it's going to allow us to utilize staff more effectively than right now where we have staff going between buildings. So I think to answer your question, I think there is because it's going to allow us to utilize staff more effectively than right now where we have staff going between buildings. And then we're open to programs, right? I, I think we're really open to take a look at, and I don't, you know, one of the things I don't want. Our added district parents who may be watching this to panic and think tomorrow it means we're going to try to bring every student back because I know, you know, what kind of stress that could cause. Our job at the end of the day is truly to provide. The environment that best meets that student's individual needs. The hope would be that we can keep as many as we can in the district. If we, if we start to see trends within the district for students who are at a district. Of a program that we can start, provide them that opportunity to come back in. I think we'll have facilities. We're also going to have more space specifically in this building to open up a lot of opportunities. But again, it will be literally an individual case by case basis, based on individual student needs. So, and it's something over the next couple of years. So I don't want. Parents, you know, as I said before, to think automatically now the district, because of this report. It's going to just go to the list of all our added districts and say they're bringing them back. Right? We're going to do what's in the best interest of the child. That's always something that's going to drive our decision making. But I think if parents had the opportunity to perhaps have a program in-house that their child could participate in, it's going to meet their needs, they would much rather do that. Than obviously go at a district, which for some students, you know, is significant as far as travel and things along those lines. So. That's the way we're going to address it.
Are there any other comments? Saying none, I will close the period of public.
This, this has to do with the test scores that, that you talked about. Do you think that, I guess what my question is, is that. Lambertville School and the middle school, high school were compared to the same schools that West Amwell School was compared to. I mean, I guess I'm kind of assuming that Lambertville and middle school, high school would score similarly to a Samuel school if they had been compared to those other schools.
Don't know really without running the data. I think it makes it challenging. Where next year we'll get back to something I think quite honestly is a better metric. Just straight up on the score, not all the other pieces that go into it. You have to see whether or not their student growth, and that's something they've been doing for a long time. I think it made it challenging because as I mentioned before, like the absenteeism piece, I believe was about fifteen percent of the overall. You know, so how did that, you know, remove that with the sports? Would that number have been higher? Did that pull that down? We know that we struggled, but you know, at the same time, that concerns me, that number. So I'll be interested to see when they rerun the numbers. In the fall, kind of where, we'll know in four months, you know, kind of where, where things stand.
I guess what I'm getting at though is. I mean, I'm sure that Lambertville School, Middle School, High School, I mean, you're kind of like what you said, like kids were being told to stay home if, or. A, a wide variety of reasons, right? I guess what I'm getting at is like, I look at those scores, I look at the West Amwell score, and I don't really think, I mean. Obviously there are concerns with, with West Amwell School and from the parents at West Amwell School. Which I think, you know, obviously need, need to be addressed and talked about, but I, I kind of look at it and I think that it's. I think it, it also speaks to the entire district in a way. Because for me, I mean, I don't know that much about, you know, how schools are rated. It, it's a little confusing for me to think that some districts, based on their demographics, would have a different set of standards, you know, like. I don't think there's that big of a difference really between what's going on at Lambertville Public School and West Amwell School in terms of academics and curriculum. There are differences, but they're not that extreme. So why is it, to me, it's, it's concerning that there would be a different standard that Lambertville School would be compared to. Which would allow to score higher, you know, which means the standard is lower. Compared to West Amwell School, but. I think at the end of the day, my concern is that the West Amwell School. Those numbers I think may, might be more applicable to the entire district and I, you know, I think it's. I just want, I'd want to say that.
So a couple of things I'll say. For those that have been around the educational game, you'll remember this. The way schools used to be evaluated was called DFG, District Factor Groups, and it was based specifically on socioeconomic. They got away from that. For the reasons that we're kind of talking about right now, some of the concerns of how do you compare, you know, and, and what that looks like. Why the state went back to that? I guess they really didn't know necessarily have a choice because of the situation that we are in. And I, and I just want to acknowledge, like, we got to do better. I know that, right? I'm not downplaying that. We have to do better. We know that. We've been working on that. We will continue to work on that. You know, the scores that we have for West Ham were not acceptable. I'm not hiding from that. I just want everyone to know there has to be a balance and I don't want. For the social emotional component of our staff and for our kids to be labeled as a failing school or failing district. I don't think that's good. That's not going to help anyone. Right? But we fully acknowledge, I acknowledge the superintendent of district that we have to do better. And that's all in us to make that happen.
Okay, so that will come, but is there any further comments we can post? If not, we'll close the period of public comment. There will be a second one later in the meeting. I want to move to our committee report, starting with buildings, transportation, finance and safety. And I thank you again.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Okay, so in our meeting last week, we talked about. The slow contracts, again, they will see their approval. So just to call out a couple. Bigger ticket items are obviously all very important. And we are approving a contract for Scazzara Builders. Last meeting, we approved to accept their bid. This is the actual contract for the renovation of South Hundred and Regional Elementary School. As well as approving a contract for Mount Mary Happy Time School. And as we know, that's additional classroom space for our. Additional preschool classes. We also. We'll see there is. A favorable maintenance reserve withdrawal in the amount of twenty-one thousand five hundred thirty-three, and that's for boiler repairs at West Amwell Elementary School. We are approving the sale of two of our buses, which have exceeded their acceptable lifespan. And additionally, we'll be approving the renewal of our food service management contracts. That's what Washington's whatever here. So aside from that, in our meeting, we talked about, again, our monthly report for ARM investing. We, at this point, gained over six hundred thousand dollars in interest so far, so. We are seeing positive results for that. As well as graduation preparations, building the grounds, working hard to get everything prepared for that day. That is it. So. With that, I'd like to move items A through.
Yes.
Brian, please.
Yes.
Tom Lewis.
Yes.
Here's totally.
Yes.
Ryan Purcell.
Yes.
Ryan Gordon.
Yes.
Ryan Toppin.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Personnel, this morning.
All right, with a couple of items going tonight, you'll see a few presentations on our list. Castro has been around the secretary at LPS. That LPS, I was seeing LPS a bit quite a while. You know, we're sorry to see her go, but obviously it's a great, great to be picking up again by the Secretary, regular office. And you'll see a few appointments for some positions. We have openings for from retirements or resignation this year. Then also the transfer, it's prim. Who started her career in the district here at Lambert Public School and will be returning there. On location starting in September next year. So we, we certainly aren't losing her, but we. Not, not new role, a different role, so very exciting, which would be a lot. I thoroughly enjoyed my, I knew music class and as long as I had the biggest drum. I was thoroughly satisfied, so. I'm sure to no one's surprised. So you'll also see some summer hours that we have for some of our secretaries, as well as our child study guidance office. We have appointments for some of our, our approval rather, of substitute teachers. As well as some, or as well as a student observer from ASOMA. And we'll have extra, extracurricular appointments. So those are some of our. Teaching workshops, things of that nature. And with that, I will move items A and B.
Thank you, Dave.
Second.
Any discussion on. I will note that. In a continuing trend of Southburn and graduates coming back to school here, Candice Pocella is at Southburn, she is small, going to be hired as a teacher. At the high school here, so you know, it's probably, it's going to be more secure. Excited to have her back. If there's no other discussion, enter for Paul. There, Brian, please.
Yes.
Tom Lewis.
Yes.
There's Troy.
Yes.
Ryan Purcell.
Yes.
Ryan Gordon.
Yes.
You have to shut it.
Yes.
Ryan Toppin.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so quite a few of the items that we discussed in curriculum were presented in some way, shape or form today. So I will go through all of those things. I will say, we did talk a little bit about on course and the plan for our course comes with a rollout. And making sure that we would have support from all the parents and students, and Tony did mention that. I just want to mention it again. And so people should keep an eye on their emails for that information, but also to the website, make sure that they're staying informed as we get closer. We did talk about the ratings, which we already kind of clarified with Tony. I think that's, of, of course, the phone books are on order right then. And so we're expecting those to go to be in, in time for next year. So I don't have anything to move for curriculum. So we can move on to policy. Yeah, I don't have anything to agree for curriculum, so I will move on to policy. Going away when I can put it. Okay, so we have a few first reads this evening and just as a reminder, and I do this every meeting, I'll be getting annoyed, but. A first read is our opportunity as a community and board to read through these policies and certainly make comments, which you can direct to Tony. It's not me. Is it me? I'm going to use my inside voice. And so just to let you know, there are, there are five. A, a few of them are revisions, so the policy six, one, one, two is actually a revision, minor revisions, but a revision nonetheless. There is a new policy that six, one, one, five point zero, zero, one, as well as zero, four. Most of them is, you know, I'll joke about this for a moment, but then get serious is how Andrew gets to spend his money. But in the end, it is, it is up for first read, so please take a look at that again. I, I don't expect for the revision, a huge, there is not a big change on that one. But the two new ones, we should certainly look at as board. And then the contracts for goods and services is again, another minor revision there. That's six, three, one policy. And then the P seven, four, four, zero, and that's the school district security. Just to let you know, this is a policy that we did adopt a while ago. But we actually are now mandated, so it's being added as a mandate, and we are also taking this opportunity to revise it. And this ties into some changes being made in terms, and I'm going to use the wrong language, Tony, but it's. Because I think you called it the. Critical response and the, the policy calls it the. The critical informa- incident mapping. So it's basically just the map of the school. They could share it amongst the law enforcement in the case of, I mean. Where we're working with multiple law enforcement agencies in the, the event of a crisis. That's very important here, especially because there's a lot of times where we're working both with state and local law enforcement and fire. So again, I will also put in front, the second reading is complete for. The student health records and health services. So I'd like to move letters A and B.
Second.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, in school, I mean, we also discussed many items that have already been presented, including the construction update and the town hall meeting, but I will reiterate. There will be the town hall meeting on May twenty-fourth at seven PM in the LPS library and on Zoom. We hope that. People will join to learn more about what to expect. Some flyers went out on to the local families right there in the immediate area, just as a reminder, because we know that. That's an important, important, important group to reach. And we had, at the time of the meeting, we had forty-seven on the list, or what, what did?
Seventy-two, we're on.
Seventy-two people have signed up for the email. So that's good and we hope that that number will continue to grow. We talked about the drop schedule and the technology that will manage those, those class assignments. It doesn't just happen magically. It's something that, you know, if, if there will be a technology that will have a hierarchical system for all of the users, so the administrators. The, the teachers and the students will all make selections as to where the, a student would go on any given day and the system then takes that information. And chooses the, the, the assignment for the day and the kids will get that notification every morning. So I know that it's. It's very specifically. Designed to make sure that the kids need, top needs are being addressed. So if a child missed a test, then they're going, that, that will be what shows up. They have to go. To that class, or if they need additional support with the teacher, they'll go there. But it also allows for students who are, who are doing well academically to participate in enrichment activities. So this is something, I know we've said it over and over again, but again, I think it's really important and I appreciate the work that the administration has done to identify technology that supports the process. We talked about strategic planning. And we will receive a final report that summarizes all of the goals that were identified through the focus group structure. The goals, there were five goals that we came away with. They were the student learning experience, community engagement, health and wellness for students and staff. Facilities, logistics, utilization and transition and communication. So those goals will all. Also all had some identified objectives and that will be used by the administration and the board event to, to develop a specific action plan this summer. And then we also discussed challenge days, which I was happy to hear that the LEF is as excited about as we are. Really, that's designed to address issues with, in the school culture and school climate, sorry. And to build empathy and reduce social isolation divisiveness and to reduce bullying, nothing. So. With that, I have nothing to move. So can I just make a comment? I mean, the strategic, for those of you who did attend the strategic planning session, I found them very engaging, not only with teachers, but the administration and, and board members were there as well, but. The, the community was very involved and while there were different people at different meetings, I just thought it was, it was a really good experience to hear from. You know. Mrs. LeBeau and I, Miss LeBeau and I had lots of, lots of interesting conversations, but in the end, I think it was, it was just a really good experience and, and great to hear things firsthand.
Great.
People came.
Fifteen, fifteen does not sound right, just so you know. There's four items on the list for, we might want to say more like. Second.